Good morning. Today is Wednesday, April the 15th, 2020. This is a special meeting of Commissioners' Court of Grimes County, Texas. We are at 114 West Buffington Avenue in Anderson. We're a little bit past 9:00 a.m. It's actually 9:05, let the records show. We're working through some, I believe, some technical difficulties or just getting ourselves used to what maybe the new normal's going to be. So if you're joining us on Facebook this morning, welcome. If you're not able to stay for the entire session, please note that the session, this morning's court, will be posted online on our Commissioners', or Grimes County's website, and I'll make an announcement on that a little bit later. So again, this meeting is called to order. Items identified within the consent agenda items are routine in nature and will be passed with one vote without being discussed separately. If a member of the court requests that a particular item be discussed prior to the meeting, the agenda will be pulled from the consent agenda and discussed as part of the regular agenda at the appropriate time. One vote will approve the remaining items on the consent agenda. Before we go any further, I do want to announce that Commissioner Walker is participating in today's Commissioner Court via conference call. Commissioner Mallett is on notice present. We have Commissioner Precinct 4 Philip Cox, and present is also Commissioner Dobianski, Precinct 2. But as I said, Commissioner Walker is participating in today's meeting via conference call telephone, as you see on the desk here. So Agenda Item Number 2, Consider and Take Action to Approve the Treasurer's List of Claims and Bills. Agenda Item Number 3, Consider and Take Action to Approve Payroll. Commissioners, you've had opportunity to review this. Are there any questions on either of those two consent agenda items?
I have none.
None, none? Commissioner Walker?
I'm good.
Okay. Do I have a motion on consent agenda items number 2 and 3?
I move we approve consent agenda items number 2 and 3.
Second. I have a motion before the court on consent agenda items number 2 and number 3 by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Cox. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Commissioner Mallett, are you on the line?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we do have a full court, welcome. So that's a 5-0 on consent agenda items. Agenda Item Number 4, Sexual Assault Resource Center Education and Outreach Specialist, Valerie Henson. Valerie is not with us this morning. But Agenda Item Number 4, Consider and Take Action to Approve Proclamation Designating the Month of April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Grimes County and Authorize the County Judge's Signatory, our attachment number 4. A number of these items were on our previous agendas, but meetings have been postponed or canceled. We're still trying to play catch-up on a few things. We have a proclamation. Mr. Foltz, is it appropriate for us to read that proclamation?
Or approve it without reading either one.
Okay. Commissioners, I know you've had a couple of weeks to review that proclamation from the Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Organization SARC, and that this is Prevention Month. Any comments or questions in regards to that proclamation?
I don't have any.
I don't have any.
Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the proclamation before us on Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Grimes County? And then authorize the county judge's signatory, sir?
I move to approve the proclamation designating the month of April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Grimes County and authorize the county judge's signatory.
All right.
Judge, I'd just point out the proclamation has a place for everybody to sign.
Correct, okay.
So I don't know if you want to sign it by yourself or everybody to sign.
There is, as the county attorney, Mr. Foltz, has pointed out, there's a place for the county judge and all four commissioners to sign this. So Commissioner Cox, if you're okay, will amend your...
I will amend my motion to include all commissioners.
All commissioners, okay. Is there a second? That was your Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
All in favor of Agenda Item Number 4, say aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries, 5-0. We will have that signed and posted. And for those of you that may see the abbreviation of SARC, S-A-R-C, that is the Sexual Assault Resource Group, and we just, we support them, and they do a very good work for us within the county. It's sometimes a shame that we have to have those types of organizations, but in the world that we live, it's good that we have those that are willingness, have a willingness.
That's who did the second on that one.
On that one was Commissioner Walker, seconded that motion. With that, we'll go to Agenda Item Number 5, Grimes County Building Maintenance Manager, Al Peeler. 5 is an update on ongoing projects, Grimes County Courthouse, Grimes County Jail, and the Grimes County Justice Center. Good morning, Mr. Peeler.
Good morning.
Do you want to turn around just for a minute so the world around you can see who you look like? That's enough. Okay.
Grimes County Courthouse is about 85% done. We are...
And you're talking about the current courthouse renovation project?
Yeah, the only Grimes County courthouse we have.
All right, sir.
It is 85% done. We are working on gutters. We will be starting to work on roof in Cupolo area. And that's about it for the courthouse unless there's any other questions.
Do we have still a completion date of around June, June 8th? Okay.
The Grimes County Jail has become, the roof is done. We've had some rumors that the roof has leaked. It's not the roof leaking, it's the purge fans shutter are not shutting, so it's causing water to come in when we had the high rain. The roof did not leak, it is complete, it is operational. Now we've got some other maintenance issues to address. The mold remediation has been put on hold because of COVID-19. We only have three areas at the jail, and that's in the back of the jail, to complete. The admin area has been completed, tested out.
Let me hold you just. Commissioner Walker, Commissioner Mallett, are you able to hear?
Yeah.
A little bit, okay. So if anybody does speak, we'll ask them to speak up. So Mr. Peeler, if you will speak up just a little louder.
Okay. So the Grimes County Jail, the control systems with COVID-19 is still, they're just put off, they're put back because we can't get into the jail. So that's where we stand on that. The Grimes County Justice Center, thanks to Mother Nature, she has put a hold on a lot of our operations out there we haven't. We're at 30 days, rain days, as of two weeks ago. We're probably going to be at 41, I believe, is the number. We will start, we're starting today to finish all piers. The piers that I'm talking about are the piers that are through the, for the walkway for the inmates to the new justice center. That's the only piers that we have to finish. Plumbing has started. We will be putting in the fire riser sometime late this week, early next. The building structural steel will be delivered this week or next. We had, we had a thing with Entergy about going overhead or underground. The proxy, if we went pad mount, which is underground, it was going to cost us $8,000. But with the savings on conduit wrapping of $4,004, that only made out-of-pocket $4,000. So...
And the preferred is underground on that?
Preferred is pad-mounted transformer underground so that we don't have poles and all that, in bad weather and all that.
Right.
We don't want that to be a hindrance for us. So we've decided to go with the pad mount, which was drawn originally. Entergy wanted to go full mount, but it was drawn as a pad mount, so that's the way we decided to go. The plumbing is, the sanitary is 50% complete. The carton forms for the building, it will be, is that, is onsite, but we can't do anything with weather and carton forms. Steel for slab is in this week, and the building steel will be here at the end of April, but it will still be, it will be ultrasounded before it gets erected.
And the ultrasound is just to make sure the steel's correct?
Steel's correct, there is no stress fractures on it, there's, the welds are correct, and just so that we have a sturdy building.
Okay.
And that should wrap up the, unless there's any questions.
Commissioners, any questions or comments in regards to Agenda Item Number 5?
Thank you, Mr. Peeler.
I don't have any.
With that, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number 6.
So I'm, I'm, sorry for the two Commissioners that aren't here. I'm passing out a new change order request, has a different cost on it. So the cost I initially put in your packets, or, yeah, that's right, was $73,986. So after doing some talking, and I want, I would like to have new door frames and transoms because our doors are rotting faster than I can keep them repaired. I got with THC, and THC said, Texas Historical Commission, for those who don't know, said, no, 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 we don't do new doors and frames. We repair damaged and rotting wood to the existing doors, transoms, because they would rather keep the good wood, the 125-year-old wood, which, by the way, I have some on my desk that is pretty impressive. But for the rotted, they just want to replace the rotted wood. So I went back to the contractor and whittled him down about $11,000 and some change. So the new change order request is for $62,714. So let me tell you where I can justify some of this cost. I have applied for an emergency grant from THC for $81,000 for this, this change order. The problem is COVID-19 has hit, and I'm about 85% that we will get it. So that would cover the cost of this. But if we let Premier get out of here, and I've asked him to run a cost for that, if they would have to come back to do it, it would cost $93,268, I believe that's the number was. So if I can get them while they're here, it's going to cost us $62,000. The only thing I have is my grant won't come, the money in hand won't get to me until September is the earliest right now. That's a COVID thing, there's nothing we can do about that. But I need, we're about 49 days or 50 days out from them completing this. That's why it was so urgent to bring up.
Okay.
Know that I'm trying to do everything so that it won't cost us anything, but there is a chance that it will cost us some. Maybe, maybe not. I can't guarantee 100%. I'm 85, 88% if you'd like to do this.
Well, part, in all fairness, you and I have had one-on-one discussion. Part of it's not whether we'd like to do it, but there's an issue of the safety concern because we do have solid doors on front and back, and it's more important on the front entry, we have a short step as you enter the courthouse, and when the door opens, it pretty much covers that complete first step. So we've had issues where people coming out, when people are trying to come in, and we have some interference. If we could get the new exterior doors, which have the glass panels in there, one, it takes it back to its natural state, or its previous state when the hard doors were put in.
Yes.
And second, and I think as important, if not more important, it enhances the safety of that entryway.
Yes.
But, so you think there's an 85% chance that we will get the grant? Why is it not 100%?
Because I'm not in Austin.
Okay. We could send you to Austin for a week and still save, so that would help.
I don't know. I don't, I don't get to vote on it, so I, I mean...
But we do have money in the fund balance, even though, I mean, to carry us over until the payment would come in. And you said September or October?
September.
September.
So when would you recognize for sure that you're going to get the grant?
That's, yeah, they told us funding would be by September, but I have an email that said that they're extending the grant...
Review process?
Review process by two weeks. So I don't, I don't have a time on that.
And what gives you the indication that it'll be 85% sure?
Well, so, and this is going to sound egotistic, but it's not. Our name's been in front of them all year, and they know how dedicated we are to our courthouse. So we haven't, we have not applied for a grant in 20 years from them for anything. This comes off the heels with Harvey. We also hired one of our, one of the best architects as a consultant with our engineer. When we started this process, his approval rate on grants to the THC is 99.8% approval So...
So the odds are in our favor?
The odds are in our favor.
Okay.
Mr. Peeler?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any other things that you might see that can offset this number if it has come out of fund balance?
Yes, ma'am. So we are in negotiations with TAC right now, currently on our interior work. I can, I'm trying to save money there as all possible. That might mean setting that back until the new justice center is built and giving me some more timing so when people move out, I have time to paint inside, and that will give me time to put everything out for bid, and maybe I can save some money that way, ma'am.
And the convenience of, I mean, one of the reasons we could save money is because once the old courthouse is, doesn't need to be in operation for day-to-day court because we have the new justice center, somebody can come in and they're not going to have breaks in their work, they can get the crew in...
Right.
Do it, get out, and save in labor costs and things of that sort. Is that right?
That is correct.
So that's one of the ways, Commissioner Walker, that some dollars could be saved in the interior work of the current courthouse.
Okay. My understanding is you're going to go with the original type doors with glass in them?
That's what is preferred, yes, ma'am. That's what's on the change order. Let me read the description that's on the change order, just so everybody has a clear understanding. It's six new exterior doors, repairs to damaged rotting wood at existing door frames and transoms, prep and paint door frames, transoms and doors, refurbish existing door hardware, provide and install new Norton, Asa, Abolloy, Potbelly door closures, three of them, general conditions for additional two weeks. So that might sound like a lot of money, and it is for six doors. However, anytime we deal with historical issues, the craftsmanship, the inspections, and the coordination has to be, I don't know how you say it, well, it's got to be approved, but it's got to be absolutely almost perfect. So it's not like going down to Lowe's or to Home Depot saying, I need six more doors, take out the old ones, put in the new ones, and we're done for $15,000. This is going to be a architectural sensitive type of job.
Yes. And originally, Commissioner Walker, our doors had glass panels in them. In 2002, when we went through renovation, and that explains a little bit more, they approved these solid wood doors.
Who's they?
Texas Historical Commission. So to, the follow-up on Commissioner Cox's statement, I kind of, when we wrote the grant, or answered the questions for THC, we put it right back on them. They created a safety hazard for Grimes County courthouse. So when you put it back on their restoration, they, they want it changed.
And certainly, it wasn't their intent to begin with.
No.
And, but now that we've had the solid doors, we've recognized a safety hazard, and now's an opportunity for us to correct that situation.
And that's, and that's why I believe I'm at 88% of getting the pass.
88? So we've increased 3%?
85, 88.
Well, I thought you said 88. I thought maybe we're improving since we're talking about it.
Now that you got me talking, maybe 88.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner Walker?
Thank you.
Okay.
Judge, I have one more question.
Sure.
With the installation of these doors, would that complete the restoration of the exterior of the courthouse?
It will complete the envelope.
If you didn't hear him, Commissioner Cox was asking the question, does it, if, with these doors, would that complete the exterior restoration of the current courthouse? And Mr. Peeler's answer was yes. So we could go another 125 years, Al?
At least 13.
When you retire, right?
And it was the intent, I believe, of these decisions to do the restoration of the courthouse, and some of these expenses, because of the age of the building and getting into things that were unknown, have required at least one other expenditure to complete the process as well as this one.
With this being done, we'll have a brand-new old courthouse, which is a good one.
Close.
Yep. Are there any other questions, Commissioners? It's an important decision, so I don't want any rush. Is there a motion?
Judge, I move that we approve the historical courthouse change order for the installation of six new exterior doors as outlined in the change order request.
Second a motion.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 6 by Commissioner Cox, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye. Aye. The motion carries. We'll now move to, thank you, Mr. Peeler. Agenda Item Number 7, Environmental Coordinator Kat Lee, consider and approve the Bratton Valley Council of Government Solid Waste Grant Project in our local agreement and authorize the county judge's signatory. Talking with Commissioner Walker yesterday and also with Kat Lee, I understand that, Mr. Foltz, you have reviewed this agreement, you don't see anything of issue, and it's essentially the same as the last agreement that we had, is that correct?
That's correct, Judge, I don't have any real concern.
Okay. Are there any questions from any of the Commissioners in regards to Agenda Item Number 7? With that, is there a motion?
Have any? Yes, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the Bratton Valley Council of Government Solid Waste Grant Project in our local agreement and authorize the county judge's signatory.
Second a motion.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 7 by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Agenda Item Number 8, Grimes County Commissioner Precinct 4 Philip Cox. Commissioner Cox, I'm going to ask you, if you will, to present the item and speak loudly, loudly, please.
Yes, sir. Judge, I was approached with some interest from Orphan's Friends and Sonic Lodge to conduct cornerstone leveling ceremony for the new Grimes County building, I'm not sure what we're calling it. Today, Mr. Clint Capps is here, he's representing Orphan's Friends and Sonic Lodge, may be able to enlighten us on some things, and I'll fill in the blanks if it...
Sure. Mr. Capps, welcome. If you would, state your name and your association with this, and speak loudly, please.
My name's Clint Capps, I'm a actual past master of Orphan's Friend Lodge, just, I don't know, 100 yards through the trees right here. The cornerstone leveling, it's really a great honor for the Grand Lodge of Texas and Texas Masons. We did it at the sheriff's office back in 1999, did it at High Point just a couple of years ago also. Basically, it's just a representation of George Washington's cornerstone land at the, at the Capitol back in, whatever it was, built way back then. We'll have a color guard there with the American and Texas flags. We'll do, you know, a salute to the flags and the pledge and everything like that. It's really just a great honor to, for us to kind of, you know, dedicate this to God and everything. We'll have a little prayer, and county judge, you know, you could say a few words at it, as long as, you know, Philip Cox, he's a, he's actually a member of that Southern Lodge, as well as John Foltz here. It's, basically, it's just, it's just an honor to us, and it's a ceremony for us to have a dedication to the county, to the county buildings. We only do it to public and county buildings, schools, and so on and so forth.
Okay.
We've done it at the extension billing for the Texas Capitol. It went all the way back to 1985, but whenever we did it back then, so.
Obviously, you were not present for that ceremony?
No, sir, I missed that one.
Invitation's in the mail, right? If I may, if we look back at the history of Grimes County, Orphan's Lodge is very instrumental in starting education here and doing a lot of great things for the county, and I think that's, that's great that you all do that.
Thank you, David.
You're welcome. Commissioner Cox, anything else you'd like to add to what Mr. Capps had for us?
No, it's just, it's a great honor for Masons to be able to have the opportunity to perform a ceremony like that, and it's, it's a, it's just a great honor.
I'll ask the underlying question, is there a cost associated with this in regards to the county?
No, sir, we'll, we'll get the cornerstone, which, it's either a 16 by 16-inch granite piece that'll have, you know, our square compass and the letter G in the middle of it, and it says, just, it'll be exactly just like it is at the sheriff's office, we'll get the exact same size, so that it kind of matches.
Sure.
We'll just need to get with the project manager and say, you know, hey, we need this amount left open for us. The only catch that we have is it has to be with a building that's not completed yet, and that can be as little as a light switch cover is not screwed on. and that can be as little as a light switch cover is not screwed on there.
Okay.
So, then that's all. No, sir, we'll, I'll get with the, with Jeff Nobles and see if he can, you know, work us up, you know, a good price on it, but the, but the Masons will take care of the cost.
Okay. If this is passed, then I would ask that yourself and Commissioner Cox, who's on part of, as part of the building committee, along with Commissioner Mallett and Mr. Peeler, if this was approved, that coordinate it so that it does meet your requirements, but it also meets our requirements of being done at the appropriate time, so there's no redo or...
Absolutely.
We miss the guidelines.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Just one more thing to add, Judge, there are numerous buildings in Grimes County that are, have cornerstones of Masonic Lodge.
Well, with that, is there a motion? Commissioner Cox?
Judge, I move to approve Orphan's Friends and Masonic Lodge to conduct the cornerstone leveling ceremony for the new Grimes County Justice Administration Building.
Second a motion. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Eight by Commissioner Cox, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries. Commissioner Mallett, are you still out there?
Yes.
Okay.
I dropped off the first guy, I'm tired.
All right, that's fine. I just want to make sure you're recorded if you are there. Mr. Capps, thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge, and I just want to say, I appreciate everything that y'all with the county have been doing this time.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. We'll now go to Emergency Management Services Coordinator David Lilly for Agenda Items Number Nine, Ten, Eleven and Twelve. I must share with the Court, Commissioners, if you don't know, Mr. Lilly was out the other evening for his evening bicycle ride and made a corner pretty quickly, and the curb didn't move. So at first, he thought he had a dislocated shoulder. The understanding is not dislocated, but it might be torn ligaments, so he's meeting with an orthopedic surgeon this morning, matter of fact, right now, at about 9:30, and we'll find out if he can just have it put in a sling, or if he's going to require surgery, but he and I have discussed his items. So with that, I'll go to Agenda Item Number Nine, discuss and take action to extend the declaration of local disaster for public health emergency issued on March 16, 2020, retroactively to Thursday, the 9th of April, 2020, with the previous extension expired, see attachment number nine. This declaration will be in effect for the next 30 days or until lifted, whichever occurs first. So for clarity, the federal government stated a national emergency, the state declared a state emergency, and as a result of that, the county declared a state of emergency, and that declaration was, was put out on March the 23rd of 2020 at 2:00 PM. We then had Commissioners Court extend, because I put the emergency order out, the Commissioners Court then extended that emergency order, and it did, it has expired, we're asking that we retro-approve it back to last week when it initially, but extend it for an additional 30 days. I hope the county clerk's getting all of this. Extend it for 30 days or the opportunity to dismiss it earlier than that 30-day period. And this all has to do with the COVID-19 situation that we are dealing with as a county, a state and as a country. So I guess in simple forms, the request is that this declaration will be in effect for the next 30 days until lifted, and that 30 days would start back at April the 9th. I'll make the motion that we extend this emergency, this declaration of local disaster for public health emergency issued that was issued previously, we retro-approve it back to April the 9th and extend it 30 days from that date. Second a motion. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Nine by County Judge Joe Fowth, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there any further discussion, Commissioners? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? The emergency order is extended, thank you. We'll go to Agenda Item Number Ten, discuss, consider and adopt resolution to designate authorized signatories for the Hurricane Harvey buyout acquisition, CDBG Disaster Recovery And the change on that was to put Commissioner Walker on there as a signatory, as some of the court was ready to write me off in my absence note. It's just a, in the event I'm not here, that we do have another person authorized, and I believe that would normally happen anyway, would it not, Mr. Foltz?
Sure.
Because Commissioner Walker is the senior member of the court. You're the oldest, Commissioner Walker, you got that?
Yes, sir, I got it.
Okay. So since we're throwing you in the fire, Commissioner Walker, do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion that we designate Commissioner Barbara Walker as a signatory for the Hurricane Harvey buyout acquisition, CDBG Disaster Recovery Program Contract 20-066-003-B966.
Second a motion. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Ten by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Eleven, discuss, consider and approve a resolution, adopting required CDBG-DR civil rights policies, and this is ju, I say, this is just a matter to make sure that we're in compliance with these grant requirements from the federal government. I don't believe we have...
I don't have any questions. I would like to make a motion.
All right.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the resolution adopting the required CDBG-DR civil rights policies.
Too late, Commissioner Mallett, Mr. Commissioner Cox beat you. So, on Agenda Item Number Eleven, there's a motion by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Cox, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Twelve, proclaim April as fair housing month. Do we need to make a motion to do that? I don't believe we do, we just need to approve, or, we just proclaim it. What say you, Mr. Foltz?
Sounds like it takes action to proclaim.
Okay. Let's take, if you have a motion and...
I move that we proclaim April as fair housing month for the county of Grimes.
All right. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Twelve, and that's to proclaim April as fair housing month by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Cox, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries. I've talked with Harry Walker, our road and bridge engineer, he elected to just discuss these items with me, and I'll share his thoughts. On Agenda Item Number Thirteen, consider authorization to issue requests for proposals for administration services, RFPs, and request for qualifications for engineering services, RFQs, related to the 2020 Texas County Transportation Infrastructure Fund, CTIF, administered by the Texas Department of Transportation. He told me this morning that he and some others had gone through the training on this, and therefore, they felt there was no need to hire an outside firm or grant writer to help with this. They've done it bef, they, Road and Bridge has done it before, they felt that they were capable to do it again. Mr. Walker's request was that we take no action on Agenda Item Number Thirteen. Commissioners, if you're okay with that, we'll go to Agenda Item Number Fourteen. So let the record reflect, Agenda Item Thirteen, no action. Agenda Item Fourteen, discuss, consider and adopt resolution to designate authorized signatories for the 25th, 2015 flood allocation, CDBG Disaster Recovery Program Contract We have attachment number fourteen. And effectively, what we were, what Mr. Walker was asking us to do is add Commissioner Walker as an additional signatory in my absence, if that were to arise, to have her able to do that. And actually, that's on Agenda Item Fourteen and Fifteen, but we're talking about Fourteen at this time. Did I make any sense in that statement?
Yes, we need to add Commissioner Walker to the signatory. I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing Commissioner Barbara Walker a signatory for the 2015 flood allocation, CDBG Disaster Recovery Program Contract Number 18403000B112.
Is there a second?
Sir.
I second the motion.
You're too late, Commissioner Walker, I have a motion on Agenda Item Number Fourteen by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Cox, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries. We have the same situation on Agenda Item Fifteen, I'll read it. Discuss, consider and adopt resolution to designate authorized signatories for the 26th flood allocation, see, this is 2016, CDBG Disaster Recovery Program Contract 19-076-033-B686, attachment number fifteen. And that's again to add Commissioner Walker as a signatory on that, for, for authorized signatories.
I move that we adopt the resolution to designate authorized Commissioner Barbara Walker as signatory for the 2016 flood allocation, CDBG Disaster Recovery Program Contract Number 19076033B686.
Second.
We have a motion on Agenda, on Agenda Item Number Fifteen, we have a motion by Commissioner Dobianski, we have a second by Commissioner Cox, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? That motion carries. Agenda Item Number Sixteen, discuss, consider and adopt resolution to designate authorized signatories for the Harvey allocation, CDBG Disaster Recovery Program Contract 20-065-100-C273, that's attachment number sixteen, essentially the same as fourteen, fifteen, just different contracts, different years.
I move that we adopt a resolution to designate Commissioner Barbara Walker as authorized signatory for the Harvey allocation, CDBG Disaster Recovery Program Contract 20065100-C273.
Second.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Sixteen by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Cox, is there any further discussion? Just a comment, Commissioner Walker, keep your pins sharp and stay healthy. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries. We'll go to Agenda Item Number Seventeen under County Judge Joe Fowth, discuss and take action to appoint William Burt Miller to serve as a private sector local workforce development board member with the term of July 1, 2020 through June 20, 2023, see attachment number seventeen. I understand Mr. Miller, who is the mayor of Navasota, has been contacted previously and has been willing to serve in this capacity, and this is something that does need to be approved beforehand and then submitted to the local workforce development board as an, as a, an appointee. Are there any questions on this?
Judge, if there's no questions, I'd make a motion to appoint William Burt Miller to serve as a private sector local workforce development board member with the term of July 1, 2020 through June 20, 2023.
Second a motion. And also, they're requiring that the county judge, well, the CEO, the county judge signed this. Is that acceptable to your...
Yes.
...motion?
Yes.
And the second? Okay. Are there any questions or comments? There's a motion before the court, okay, on Seventeen, Agenda Item Seventeen by Commissioner Cox, seconded by, was that you, Commissioner Dobianski? Hearing no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Seventeen, Discuss and Take Action to Approve Interlocal Cooperation Contract Failure-to-Apare FTA Program between the Texas Department of Public Safety and Grimes County, and authorize the county judge as signatory, see attachment number eighteen. This again is, as we, as we have, is from the Department of Public Safety, it's a procedural item with them, but it needs to be approved in court.
There are no further questions or comments. I move that we approve the interlocal cooperation contract failure-to-apprare program between the Texas Department of Public Safety and Grimes County, and authorize the county judge as signatory.
Second.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Eighteen by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Cox, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? That motion carries. Agenda Item Number Nineteen, there's a typo, my fault, but discuss and take action to approve funding, discuss and take action to approve funding for HR department, where it says Auditor's Department, it should read HR, Department for Training During Transition of New Hire. And as we know, our current HR director, Lucy Pope, is retiring at the end of May, and Commissioners Court has made a decision to hire a replacement. We had an internal candidate, Ms. Toledo Coleman, out of the Auditor's Department, and so Toledo and Lucy are as much as they can training, or Lucy's spending as much time as she can with Toledo to get her trained on requirements of the job. Toledo is also working on some, or has already taken some webinars that have been provided through organizations and also Tac, Texas Association of Counties, and the auditor, Mary Nichols. Ms. Nichols, you gave us kind of a countdown sheet of Week One, Week Two, Week Three and Week Four. Do you want to explain what that means for us or to us?
Well, depending on when you want to move Toledo over full-time in HR, would depend on what it would take to cover her salary until Ms. Pope goes, leaves. So one week, two weeks, and then you have the figures there, three weeks, four weeks, you know. I just wanted y'all to have some idea of what it's going to cost.
So this is not additional monies at this time, this is transferring from one department to another department?
Well, this is what it'll take when you move Toledo full-time, if you move her full-time prior to Lucy leaving.
Lucy leaving, okay.
Kind of like when we hired the new elections administrator.
Gotcha.
I don't know that, you know, I haven't posted my position yet, so I'm going to get that posted and then...
And your position being Toledo's replacement, okay? And your position being Toledo's replacement, okay?
So, you know, when I hire her as a replacement,
Right.
I actually will have enough money in my budget to cover that.
Yes.
And I guess I could probably even cover this because I'll have enough left over. But that was something that we needed to look at just in case. But I looked at my budget last night and I realized that I'm going to have 20-something thousand left over in salaries because of the span
Right.
without another person.
Would you be okay if we just tabled this until further notice?
Yes.
Commissioners, would that be acceptable to y'all?
It's fine.
Commissioner Walker, is that acceptable to you? Commissioner Mallett?
Yes. I was wondering though, when do we anticipate doing the training for Ms. Coleman?
Well, she's already started some of that. As I said, she's taken, I know at least one webinar, maybe a couple, and she signed up for another course. And then she's maintaining contact with the Tac Representative, the Texas Association of County Representative for Human Resources. I've also talked with Lucy, Lucy Pope, to keep Toledo in the loop as much as she possibly can on work that's being conducted by the HR department between now and Lucy's departure.
And Ms. Pope's departure is in June or the end of May?
End of May, I believe it's May 29. I'm not exactly sure, or maybe she's going through the end of May, but I can double-check that. But it's, she, she's going to be leaving us at the end of May.
So when we initially talked about this, we talked about her getting into Ms. Pope's office to train and sort of as much as possible.
Correct.
So did I hear Ms. Mary say that she's willing to make a budget amendment to transfer funds so that Ms. Coleman could train with Ms. Lucy?
I don't think she said that out loud, but I think, I think the consensus was she would be willing to do that based on her review of what her salary lines look like in her department. She's going to have enough monies because she's had, she had a period of time where we were looking for a replacement for Jessica Herrera, who, who left, and there was a gap where salaries weren't paid during that time.
So if we table it today, do we see this coming back next week? Or I'm just trying to figure out why we're tabling it.
Well, Ms. Nichols is shaking her head no, she doesn't see it coming back next week. It's probably just a matter of line item transfers and we'll be done with it. And Ms. Mary shook her head yes on that.
Okay. And then Ms. Mary, you're going to go out for, you're not ready yet?
Well, she's ready.
Shake her head.
I'm going to get the job posted next week. And of course, it'll be internally for three days and then after that publicly.
And Mary said that she had some good candidates that she had interviewed previously that, and if they're still available, I guess these were outside candidates, that might still be looking for work or have interest, but that's to be determined. So next week she'll, she'll post the job. That'll be internal for three days in accordance with our policy. And if she does not get a viable candidate from that, then she would post it externally.
So are we anticipating maybe starting Ms. Coleman in Ms. Pope's office to train by May 1st? Or are you needing the new person to train with Ms. Coleman, Ms. Mary?
I'll need the new person to train with Ms. Coleman part of the time. I know that Ms. Pope has been out last
Can you step a little closer?
Ms. Pope is, was out last week and this week. And so the actual training will get started next week with Toledo and, and Ms. Pope one-on-one. I imagine that the training will be about four hours a day. That way Toledo can still get the work done in the auditor's office. That is crucial. The rest of it will be, you know, what she can't get done will be absorbed by myself and the others.
Okay.
I know that Toledo has
I'm just asking to see what the delay was going to be. But I do understand that you need her there to train whoever comes in for your office.
Yes.
And, and there would be no reason we couldn't allow Toledo to go back after, or even in the month of June to help get whoever it is up to speed for Mary's office.
I don't think it'll take that long. You know, I think if Toledo has a good week of training with somebody, then that would be probably plenty of time. So I know that Toledo has attended several webinars that were offered by Fred Pryor. The auditor's office has covered her registration for those conferences and she's also registered to attend a live webinar, I believe it's in June. And we've taken care of that and she, we've paid for a membership so that she can have a whole year of taking these webinars at no cost. So.
Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Mary.
You're welcome.
So we can, we can table this with no action at this time, Commissioners. So for Number 19, tabled, no action. Go to Agenda Item Number 20. And that, and it reads, review and discuss Grimes County's current and future financial situation and take action if needed. The question comes up, and Mary, I'm going to ask you to come back up to the podium, but the question comes up, Grimes County is not in a financial crisis situation. However, we are engaged in a crisis situation with COVID-19. There's no doubt revenues are probably going to be somewhat diminished because of the lack of commerce that's going on through, lack of commerce throughout the county, throughout the state. So sales tax revenues are going to be down. People, because of job loss or things of that sort, may be slow pay on property taxes or their county taxes as they become due for next year. And when I say next year, I'm talking about the 2021 budget year. So instead of getting caught in a situation where, oh, why didn't we think of that? Mary and I've already had a little bit of conversation. What are some things that we can potentially do to offset any financial shortcomings the county might have in the future due to reduced sales tax, due to reduced court revenues and things of that sort? Of course, along with that, we've had reduced expenses. We haven't run as many pages through the county printers and documents and things of that sort. And we know that some of the county fuel usage is down because of less miles being traveled, et cetera. But at this point, we don't know if one's going to offset the other. And the best guess is, let's take a look at if we do start to run short of cash or our reserves get below a level that we're not comfortable with. With that, Mary, you presented us some information, I think, two weeks ago or three weeks ago, actually.
Well, they didn't get a copy of it because
Because you gave it to me and, and I got quarantined. So as a result of that.
I did email it yesterday evening to them and then I provided a hard copy this morning. This is information that I asked Ben Rosenberg to provide if we were to borrow $3 million towards the building. But I also asked him to please have it so that if we borrowed it and then ended up not needing it, that we could pay it back in a, at any time without any penalties. And so this is the information that he provided. Now, as the judge said, I'm concerned about our ad valorem taxes and the collection.
And when you say ad valorem tax, many of us know what that is, but would you explain kind of briefly what that includes?
That's the property taxes that the appraisal district collects for us. With the COVID-19 and a lot of layoffs and so forth, my concern is people paying their taxes on time. We usually collect the majority of the taxes between October and December 31st. I'm concerned that they won't come in as quickly as they have in the past. And so I've looked at current employees to cover the pay periods for October, October to December. That's going to be just, just for the payroll, not the load. Just the payroll would be $2,644,929.74. So my thinking is, I still have about two point, a little over 2.8 million that needs to be moved from fund balance into the capital projects fund to meet the 12 million that we budgeted. So my thinking is, if we could borrow this, put it in, in the building fund, then if, if the taxes come in like they should, or we hope that they would, then we could pay this back, but it would give us a security blanket to cover payroll and still be able to pay the building without taking our fund balance down to nothing. And so I just wanted to present this, to give it, give y'all something to think about. We don't have to take action on it right now. I think it could come up on the next agenda if y'all wanted to, you know, mill it over a little bit and, and think about it and think, you know, I've even talked to Janice. And she goes, well, she said, I really don't want us to
Janice being the county treasurer?
Yes, I'm sorry. She said, I really don't like the idea of us borrowing. She said, but I would rather us borrow it and not need it than need it and not have taken the action that we need.
And the proposed interest rate, is that a 1.6 rate? Is that what I'm reading in the documents you've
Yes.
shared with us?
Mm-hmm.
So that's pretty cheap money in that respect.
Yeah.
Okay. Let me ask this question, because we have, we were previously gone and getting a credit rating and all of that kind of information, and we did spend some money to get that credit rating and to make sure the lenders knew we were a good credit risk. How long is that rating or that information good before it would go out and some lender say, well, we're going to have to do another credit rating and we'd have to re-spin or spend that money again?
The rating was good for six months and we had it done in October, so it has expired. And I talked with Mr. Rosenberg about that and he reached out to the S and P and they said, yes, we would have to redo it if, if we so desire. Now, what he said is, if we just, if he just presents this to banks, the banks do their own rating, but they would take that S and P rating and go with that. However, if we wanted it to go to people who normally buy bonds and stuff, then we would have to get a new S and P rating. He doesn't think it would be quite as much since they have just recently done one, but it's possible.
Didn't we spend like $15,000 for the last credit rating?
It was either 15 or 20, something like
Somewhere in that, 15 to 20,000, okay. Sitting here, I prefer not to have to do that again, particularly if we can, if we could go through banks, if we can get the same rate, then there's no benefit to going
Well, the rates will probably be just a little bit higher and having the option in there that we could pay it off early without penalty, that'll make it just a little bit more higher. So, and it all depends on what the rates are the day we put it out.
Right.
I mean, because they've been going up and down, up and down, up and down. And so, you know, he can't say for sure it's going to be 1.6. You know, it could get up to 2.75 or something, you know? But I still, I just want us to think about that and, and take into consideration that we don't want to get caught with not having enough money.
Are, this, this might be, I don't know if this is a question for you or for Mr. Rosenberg, but the question is, would any of the Grimes County banks be in a position to do that type of funding? And I don't expect you to know that off the cuff, but
It's possible.
That would be a question that I would like to explore if indeed we said, yes, we'd like to borrow money. Two, we'd like to go through the banks versus S and P. Three, could we get a local bank versus an outside of Grimes County bank?
That would be something that Mr. Rosenberg would have to really be the one to answer that because I know if we're going to borrow money, we have to use a financial advisor.
Right.
And so I would have to ask him, and he's probably watching. So he'll probably have an email for me when I get back.
So Ben, that would be a question we have for you. Okay. So since we've already expired or gone past the S and P, there's no sense of urgency in the next 72 hours or two weeks and we need to make a decision. But while the rates are low and we keep reviewing this, when, when is, when do we get our tax numbers from the tax assessor collector?
We'll get preliminary numbers by the end of this month.
But again, those numbers are in the event people are going to pay and
Yes.
revenue tax dollars come in.
And then we'll get a confirmation of those on September, on July 30. And that, that's, you know, that's a confirmation on what
What they propose.
what they're going to be building.
Right.
But, you know, with these uncertain times, nobody knows what, what your rate's going to be.
Exactly. All right. Mary, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, I'm, with your permission, I'd like to table this item. It's a very important item, but give you at least another week.
A question?
Yes. Commissioner Walker?
I wanted to ask, I wanted to ask Ms. Mary if she could give, I don't know if her breakdown has all the additional fees that would be incurred to go with this tax note. So I just wonder, are there any additional fees?
I will have to check with Mr. Rosenberg because he sent this to me in an email and I'll just need to check with him on that.
All right, thank you.
And then Ms. Mary, would you, once you get that information, would you make sure that you submit that to all of the Commissioners and myself via email?
Yes.
Okay. That way we'll have it in hand before we have another Commissioners' attachment distribution or Commissioners' meeting. Does that work for you, Commissioner Walker?
Yes, and if we could get it, it's been possible.
Certainly will try. Okay. So if that's agreeable, we will table Number 19 with no action or no vote at this time on our part, I'm sorry, Number 20, no action or no vote on our, our part, with the understanding we'll review the information we've been presented and we'll review additional information as received. Agreed?
Yes.
Okay, tabled. Agenda Item Number 21, discuss and take action regarding employee rights and other related concerns regarding Families First Coronavirus Response Act, which is FF-CRA. That's our attachment number 21. This is, again, just providing information to you Commissioners of some of the federal legislation that's recently been passed and laws that have been passed that we need to be prepared to address and adjust some of our activities if we, if we need be prepared to address and adjust some of our activities if we, if we need to. This extends leave times and family leave time. It, in the state, I know that it has increased unemployment revenues and things of that sort. So where it says, "Discuss and Take Action Regarding Employee Rights," thus far, we have as a county been paying our employees as we normally would with the idea that we've had people working from home, we've had people quarantined at home, but also working at home. So the, I don't know what, how do I want to say it? The, the plan thus far is employees have been paid as they normally have been as we try to get through this crisis. I do know that after 10 weeks, there's a, a two-thirds pace scenario, but we've got time to see what the outcome is. I know the federal government is looking at how they can bring the, or bring the country back online economically. I understand Governor Abbott is doing the very same thing for the state of Texas and hopefully we'll get some word on that. My suggestion would be at this time that we continue to operate like we're operating as we get a little bit further down the road with the results of the economy, what the governor does, what the president does, then it might cause us to have to make some additional or different decisions down the road. But we know that the governor has shut down the schools until May the 4th. I heard yesterday, I don't know if it's Fort Bend or Katy or one of those districts, they're shut down for the balance of this school year. I don't know if other school districts are going to follow suit. I have not talked to the superintendents in Grimes County in the last week or two as to what their plans or intentions are, and I'm sure that they're reviewing and also talking with the governor's office as what the government, governor might kind of put in their direction. So, one, I wanted you to have what information I had and make sure that you were kind of up to speed on what's going on. And when I say up to speed, just as soon as you learn something today, it changes by tomorrow. So we'll just have to stay on our toes. Comments or questions?
I do have a question. Judge, is this currently what the county is abiding by the first Coronavirus Response Act? Are we abiding by the guidelines that's set forth from the wage and hourly vision of the Department of Labor on this sheet of paper you gave us? Is this the guidelines that we are following as a county?
Well, we're going to, the answer to that is, we'll be required to follow these guidelines because they're federally imposed guidelines on us. As far as, because we started dealing with the, the virus back around March 23rd, thereabouts, and we, that's when we first started having people quarantined and being off the job. The decision was made through human resources and through treasury that we would not make any changes. And this, these laws, these changes, this act, I should say, was then started on April the 1st. So the 10-week period started on April 10, which is going to take us all the way through April, through May, and I guess through mid-January.
June.
I'm, June. I'm trying to get out of this year. Through June, yeah. So to answer your question, yeah, we're following the guideline, but at this point, we're not, we haven't exercised the 10 weeks. We're still kind of in week two, heading into week three of what this act is telling. So I don't know if I'm answering your question, but we're not-
Well, I'm not following what you're saying when you say the 10 weeks.
Well, under the fair leave entitlements, there's a 10-week clause, okay. Leave requests may be eligible for up to an additional 10 weeks and partially paid expanded family and medical leave. There's also up to 12 weeks of paid sick leave and expanded family and medical leave paid at two-thirds for qualifying reason number five, below or up to $200 a day and $12,000 total. So Commissioner Walker, I do not know all the ins and outs of this act. I've only made myself familiar with the, I guess, the short form that has been sent to us by the feds and by the state. I just know that we're going to have some obligations or, we're going to have some rules that we would need to follow 10 weeks down the road and 12 weeks down the, or 12 and then 10, so maybe 22 weeks. And I guess my point is, I don't know if we'll have to enact any of that at that period of time. I'm hoping things get back to what we would classify as normal, our business as usual, and all of our employees are actively engaged in work, and we know that we have the current funding available to make our payroll. So if you have an in-depth question more than that, I can't answer it at this time.
Well, I'm sure I could talk with Jack about it, just to make sure, because what I hear you're saying is you're applying different dates than what this is applying?
No, I'm just saying, we haven't reached any of the dates that the act is implying. We're not that far down the calendar yet. So we are running the county as normal for the time being when it comes to paying our employees.
Although the provision says they will apply from April 1st through December 31st? That's in the first paragraph.
Are you talking about the one that says the Families First Coronavirus Response Act requires certain employers to provide fair, to provide their employees with paid sick leave and expanded family and medical leave for specified reasons related to COVID-19? These provisions will apply from April 1, 2020 through December 31, 2020. So all's, all's I'm saying is, and correct me if somebody has a different interpretation, this is not just government employees, this is all employers who, and employers who have maybe already laid off their employees and are of the opinion, I don't need to give them any more sick leave, I don't need to pay them, et cetera, et cetera. What I'm saying for the county employees, we are moving as we normally do and we have not had to go and extend any leaves as of yet, or we haven't had to reduce anybody's pay to a two-thirds because we're not in, in those areas as of yet. And I hope to be smarter by next week because I'm signed up for a webinar this week, but sometimes those webinars confuse me a little bit more, so.
Well, I'll, I'll reach out to Jack-
Okay.
-just to make sure that we are one of those certain employers, just to see how this is being set.
Sure. And I'd appreciate your feedback when you visit with them.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. So commissioners, if you are okay, we'll table Agenda Item Number 21, but certainly all of us, with our contacts, whoever they might be, do a little more study and research and keep us all where we need to be. And we'll certainly take advice from our county attorney and his office as they recognize adjustments or changes.
Judge, we are under the requirements of the FMLA as it stands, and when a person chooses to take time pursuant to FMLA, to contact HR department and say, here's the reason that I'm taking this leave, and it's worked out about how much time they're going to be out and what they're entitled to, this is the same thing, except it's expanded now for COVID reasons. And those, the basis for the reasons could be one through six at the bottom.
Correct.
Number five, that's referred to multiple times, is if you have a child whose, whose school is shut down, do you get paid for that time or not? What I think you started with was, it's the county's intention to have the employees continue to work, whether it's remotely or whether it's in the office with the door closed. This refers to, can someone be, be paid for medical or sick leave? And that's the rate by which they'll be paid, but it, it's assuming there's no work. I'm taking medical leave and I'm at home because of one of these reasons and I'm not working. If they're working, then you just pay them like you, you normally would. So this applies to when someone says, I'm taking time for one of these six reasons. This is the rate at which the county would be required to pay-
Right.
-assuming that we're one of those public sector employers, which I suspect we are. But those folks would need to work that out with HR.
Why didn't you jump in earlier? You just wanted me to ramble?
I'd like to get out of here as fast as we can.
I understand, okay. Thank you for your input.
Thank you.
All right. So we're going to no action and table Agenda Item Number 21. That takes us to Agenda Item Number 22. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move with adjourn.
I second.
You'd have to third it, Commissioner Walker. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 22 by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Cox. Any discussion on adjournment? Hearing not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. For those of you that are on Facebook, if you would hang on for just a minute, the meeting's over, but I, I want to share something with the citizens of Grimes County. Due to the order of the governor regarding gatherings of no more than 10 people, the Grimes County Commissioners Court encourages you to watch our Commissioners Court meetings via the live feed, as we just had on Facebook, and on the, on the Grimes County Courthouse Facebook page, or the video of the meeting on our website, which is www.grimescountytexas.gov, which will be uploaded now that this meeting has been adjourned. And during our regular meetings, this is for your benefit, I would hope, that we include a time for public comments, and we do want your comments, but in order to comply with the gatherings of no more than 10 people, we're going to ask you to review the agenda item. Any comment you want to make, send that via email to my attention or to Cherie Wagner's attention, and that way you can have your comments heard publicly, and we would desire to have that done. Or even better still, have those comments sent to our county clerk's office, Vanessa Brzezinski, and they're going to require, we would require your name, your place of residence, and what agenda item you'd like to speak on, or what topic you'd like to speak on. There is a deadline for our next meeting, which is going to be held on April 22 at 9:00 a.m. Your deadline for submitting your public comments via email through the county clerk's office would be April the 21st at 4:00 p.m. That's the Tuesday prior to the Wednesday meeting. So I will be including links to the webpage where you can find the agenda, where you can find the Commissioners Court videos, and contact information for these different offices as we continue to run in a reduced situation. Thank you. Have a great day and stay safe, stay apart.